I'd like to call to order the Southborough School Committee Open Meeting of October 11th, 2023. And we are all in attendance except for Kamali from the meeting. So first on the agenda is public comment. Is there any public comment? Nope, so seeing none, we can move on to the next item, new business, and I will turn that over to you, Greg.
So this evening, we have our elementary principals who will also be giving their school improvement plan, action plan update. So since they are attending, they will also be giving their principals reports. So we'll start with Kathleen. We're going to work in a little slower.
I'm going to work back to Super Fun. So we shared the goal of this whole mission. So Trotter had a successful fun run last week. The fun run event was a resounding success. It brought together all of their students, creating a fun and healthy atmosphere for all. Thank you to the support of the SOS who provided drinks and prizes for the event. Nature's Classroom Overnight Field Trip occurred, they came back this afternoon. I saw them uploading the buses. Trotter students had an unforgettable experience during the overnight field trip to Nature's Classroom in Groton. This trip just returned an hour and a half ago with many smiling but tired faces leaving the buses. This hands-on learning opportunity provided valuable lessons in environmental science and fostered team-building skills in a beautiful fall setting. Trotter has successfully started implementing the Carnegie Math Program, and they are working closely with consultants to build their teachers' capacity and repertoire with this new program. And finally, they welcomed Riley with therapy dog. Trotter is delighted to announce the addition of Riley, a golden retriever, to their school community next week. Riley will serve as a therapy dog, providing valuable emotional support and comfort to both students and staff. They believe that Riley's presence will enhance the well-being and overall atmosphere of their school. In closing, these accomplishments and initiatives reflect Trotter's commitment to the well-rounded development of their students, fostering an inclusive and engaging learning environment. Any questions for Trotter?
Roger.
No, so when did Riley assume his new position?
I believe it's next week.
Oh, okay, next week, alright, hasn't been, it's...
Completing HR paperwork.
Okay. That could be a couple of weeks. Where's her, I don't see her, so...
And on to Neary. This month, we began our second step lessons in the classroom and at our whole school meetings. During the first whole school meeting, we brainstormed about, brainstormed our Neary norms and reviewed expectations for positive and productive women community. Our second whole school meeting lesson was the launch of the bullying lessons within the second step curriculum. The focus was on providing students with a three R strategy, which is recognize, report, and refuse. We also embedded some of our wisdom practices into the lesson by using noticing and wandering and turn-and-talk strategies. We've been busy all month preparing for next week's fun run. Students are collecting food pantry items, raising funds, and accruing points. All money raised will be used for field trips, end-of-the-year celebrations, and teacher grants. I know it's going to be an awesome day. We're continuing our partnership with the Southborough Senior Center, and this year, they'll be working on a school-wide community service project with us. Our other service projects this month include the fun run food pantry and our candy collection that is donated to a local group called Rise Above, which is an organization dedicated to providing Massachusetts children in foster care with enriching activities, opportunities, and experiences. One of the things they do is put together college care packages to Massachusetts students who are in college but have aged out of the foster care system. Many of us have great memories from our college days of getting a message that a care package was waiting in the mailroom, and our students' candy donations certainly help with those late-night study sessions. Finally, we met our new school resource officer, Julia Fontana, and she and Officer Norton met with us to begin planning for our DARE program for our fifth graders, which will happen in early winter.
I have a question. Thanks, I have a question about the Senior Center collaboration. Can you tell us a little more about it? This is my first time hearing about it.
Yeah, so each year, we work with the seniors to have a community service project. We also provide cards and placemats for their, like their Veterans Day lunch or their different holidays they celebrate throughout the year. This year, we haven't finalized it yet, but we're working on a, it's not knitting, what's the other name for that?
Crocheting.
Crocheting, it's a crocheting kindness, different animals, and so we're collaborating with them. So we'll be able to spread kindness, which is a big thing for Neary across the community.
Do they do this together, or...
Yeah, so hopefully, some of the seniors will help our students to learn to crochet, and some of our teachers have already started learning to crochet as well, and our art teacher is also involved in it, so we're looking forward to it.
This happens at the Senior Center?
No, well, they'll do their work at the Senior Center, and we'll have our students within the school setting. But we do have the seniors come, and some will join us on Community Read Day, some just come in and read to the students. We also, on various days, and we also invite them to our concerts and things like that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
On Friday, we held our second Care Assembly of the Year, which focused on acceptance. As a school, we discussed what it means to be accepted by others for who we are and how we demonstrate acceptance towards others or about this of our differences. We talked about the strength that comes from unique perspectives and how we play a role in supporting each other within our school community. A special thank you to Ms. Bogart, our behavior specialist, who is responsible for the planning of our monthly assemblies, as well as weekly enrichment lessons that reinforce our care themes and take place in second and third grade classrooms. This week, we launched our fundraising efforts for the Woodward Color Run, which is scheduled for Friday, October 27th. The Color Run is the biggest fundraiser of the year, and last year grossed $23,000. SOS has set a goal of $18,000 this year, with hopes that it will fund all of our enrichment programming, including High Touch High Tech, Eyes on Owls, Johnny the K, musician, stunt BMX rider Chris Paulus, storyteller Len Cabral, field day events, student spiritware, numerous field trips to the zoo, Hanover Theater, and Trotter Middle School. The goal of SOS is to provide an enriching school experience for all Woodward students at little to no cost. So this fundraising is pretty much, you know, our main focus for the year, and then funds all of those things throughout the course of the year. I'm incredibly grateful to SOS for their organization and, you know, willingness to support all of our programs. This coming week, staff will participate in the next installment of ST Math Professional Development as part of the 108 Foundation Grant. Staff will take part, excuse me, staff will take a deeper dive into the student dashboard and data tools within the platform and receive guidance on how to use data points available to tailor instruction to individual needs. Some of this work will include moving students along in their journey or giving them revisits to previously learned standards in the previous year, if that's necessary for the student at that time. So we're looking forward to that next training piece on Monday.
Thank you.
Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And at the Finn School over the past month, we had our first parent coffee on September 14th. Very well attended. Topics included an overview of our school, aspects of inclusion, volunteering, and ways to help your child adjust to the school year. It was recorded and is available on our website. We're planning several other parent presentations this year, collaborating with Woodward and Neary. We've also informally surveyed parents on future topics, and a topic that we'd like to cover in late November is reducing childhood stress and anxiety through mindfulness practices. We've also had our first crisis team meeting and met with Southborough's new resource officer, Julia Fontana. We discussed school safety and reviewed several of our emergency response protocols. After our meeting, Officer Fontana observed our student drop-off procedures and our traffic patterns and offered some advice for increased visibility and safety. And we've also been providing all of our students with an understanding of what safety, respect, and responsibility are at the Finn School. We're doing this through our classroom meetings, morning announcements, whole school assemblies, and a star incentive program developed by our behavior specialist, Emily Silva. And as of this writing, we're seeing more positive expected behaviors and less unexpected behaviors from our students.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. I actually do have a quick question. So for parents who don't get to attend these meetings or don't watch them, are all of these updates put into the various school newsletters so that the community can...
Essentially, that's a great idea. Are parents square updates?
Yeah.
Aspects, I think, are, but I think that's a good point.
I actually want... So how often do school councils meet at this...
School councils, I think, we, every...
At Woodward, it's every other month?
Every other month.
Any questions? Thank you, everyone. I forgot to mention that we were called to order at 6:31, by the way, so adding that on record. Our next item on the agenda is a transportation update.
Sure, I will turn it over to Keith Roy.
Yes, Greg. So on a daily basis, and I think everyone is aware, our transportation contractor, North Reading Transportation, NRT, is struggling with the driver shortage, which is not just a Southborough problem, but a regional, state, and national problem, certainly. It has resulted in delays doubling up at times and even cancellations and unexpected ones of that. I think the community has been incredibly patient with the entire situation, and as we help, you know, NRT navigate it. One piece that has risen to the top, and I've really pushed NRT for an update, is the use of the tracking app, the bus tracking app, Where Is My Kid? When that is working, it's an incredible asset. It really is. It helps with delays, it helps with all things associated with it. But when it's not, and I'm hearing more and more frequently about the inconsistency of it, it does, it does put a hamper on our ability to, you know, communicate well with students and families, and has caused some disruption. So I have asked NRT formally for a deeper review of its effectiveness because the district does not manage, or can we even troubleshoot it? I have no access to that system at all, and neither do any of the district staff. So we really are employing them to make sure they upgrade or do the necessary changes needed to make it more consistent, and I have verbally gotten that commitment from them, and I'm hoping to be able to update the community with something more formal in the next few days. What the district can control, though, is our communication when we do have these types of delays. And we really have tried to focus on that in providing as much timely information to families as we get it. It's not always 100% accurate, but does help to get the parent square messages out. And I really can't stress enough how important the Parent Square app has been. We started using that last year. We're able to isolate bus lists, and that's updated on a nightly basis. So it's really been helpful to get the information in the hands of the parents as quickly as possible. And parents have commented on that frequently, that the communication, although good and sometimes unexpected, is helpful to help make adjustments to morning and afternoon plans. I can say that we, last week, with the help of the principals and school staff, we did some, we collected some ridership data, which then helps us make decisions. This is typically something we'd like to do a little earlier, but because of the inconsistency with the bus driver shortages and the needs of coverage and things like that, it wasn't advantageous until it settled down, which it did for a little while last week, and we're able to collect some good data, and that's currently being analyzed. The other piece is, we do have a couple of buses that aren't arriving on time in the morning. We did make adjustments even as late as this morning and this afternoon to help improve that. So because of ridership and because of some other factors, we are now looking to make sure that all of our buses are arriving on time. I think we still had one or two this morning, but these were coverage situations and doubling up, and that's going to happen when we have those types of conditions. So overall, I'd say it's been an uneven start. It has everything to do with the bus driver shortage. But when we are staffed and when all the routes are covered, they're performing as expected, which has been good. Doesn't mean it couldn't be better, and it should be better. We are trying to meet with NRT as frequently as possible to eliminate any of the, you know, problems that it's causing our community. But I do want to reiterate again that the patience that everyone has shown and the appreciation for just drivers has been great. The schools have been very flexible, and we're going to continue to pull through as best we can. Uneven is the way I would describe it.
Could you, you know, if you compare, if you look at NRT versus other, is NRT the biggest company in Massachusetts, in the state, for example?
One of, one of the larger ones, I would say.
Is the shortage and the issues that we're having with them consistent with what other districts in the state are having with their bus companies too? Or is this, you think, a specific...
What I'm gathering from talking to different districts, it is pretty similar. We are actually in better shape than some, even locally, with the number. Out of the 32 drivers that we have district-wide, I think we have 30 of them as regular as possible. So we're down two drivers on a rather, you know, somewhat consistent basis. When those are covered well, and there's no other absences, we're good. But that doesn't always occur. But I would say consistently, we're better than most.
Yeah, I think one of those buses is my daughter's bus, because I get those...
We have 30 drivers, and then there's the unplanned absences.
Correct.
So what we're experiencing is we're down two drivers, and then if we have three or four drivers call out because of whatever reason, then it is really impactful to our overall plan and route plan, and it's hard to manage that. I would just add that NRT is a business. We do have concerns with its ability to operate efficiently as a business. So there's some internal controls that we're concerned about that we don't necessarily have control of, that we feel is impacting our ability to provide a good service to our community.
When's our contract up with them?
So at the end of, so end of this fiscal year, so we had a three-year contract with ability to renew. So we renewed for an additional year. At the end of this year, we'll have the ability to renew for an additional year if we so choose. So we are doing some work behind the scenes around what are our options? And now is the time to do that because we need time to go through the process.
Thank you. Other questions?
I do. Is NRT actually also outside of Massachusetts, or is it only in Massachusetts?
In New Hampshire.
Okay, I mean, I thought I heard something about them, and it was in another state, so that could make sense.
They're not a national firm like we had before. First Student is more of a national bus company who does have service in Massachusetts, but NRT is not. It's more regional, I would describe it.
So maybe outside Massachusetts, but maybe confined well within New England.
I would agree, yes.
Or a couple of states in New England.
I think that, too, I think there have been a couple of articles in the community advocate around some of our surrounding districts also having a high level of frustration with NRT. So what we're experiencing is exactly what other districts who are using NRT are experiencing. And again, it just speaks to, it's not just about driver shortage. There's, so there's some underlying business operations that, you know, need to be improved in order for us to provide our community a better service.
Any questions?
Yeah, so for the tracking app, have they communicated what were the issues? I know last time we met, they said they were working on it.
That's correct.
Yeah.
I thought by, with, actually, since the last time we met, I was expecting a more significant improvement. That's what I was promised at that time, and that has not occurred. So it's a combination of what needs to happen is a device has to be properly programmed and placed in the actual vehicle in order to properly track that number. What's happening is there's a management issue with that, getting the device into the vehicle and properly programmed, which is more of a, it's not a tech thing. It's more of a management thing. And then there are GPS issues with the devices themselves connecting to the app. So whether the app needs to be refreshed, there's things that just commonly would occur with any type of app when it's stalling out or not working. You gotta sign out and sign back in. So there's tech glitchy-type things that are happening, which I think should be investigated and a lot of assets put towards to resolve, because I think they are. And then, and it speaks to what Greg just mentioned about the management part of it. That's the aspect of it that frustrates me, honestly, because it seems like that is easily controlled. So it's twofold, and there's also a user error as well, just like there would be with any type of technology. And there are aspects of that as well. So to untangle it all, it's, there's multiple facets, but the app itself is not performing as it is supposed to.
Yeah, I mean, as a parent, it is frustrating. Because the last school year, it worked perfectly. It was very helpful, and now it's been one in a month.
Inconsistent for you? Is that a good way of describing it, or has it been working at all?
It hasn't been working for me for this school year, yeah.
And that's what I'm hearing more and more, saying it's gotten to that point where people are like, wait a minute, this was supposed to be resolved by now. And I literally just responded to two parents in the last hour about the exact same concern. So I'll continue to provide the pressure on NRT to get this resolved. And I just spoke to the vice president two days ago about a timeline for that, and I need to be in touch with the community to give them information, so...
And we're probably not their only customer, right?
That's right.
So...
So the parent, the parent company of NRT is called Go Beacon, and they purchased the app. It is their app that they own, and it's not a third party. So they do control and operate it, and that's why I'm putting pressure on them to get it resolved.
We, just one comment, too. We do have, in our contract, service-level agreements that are holding NRT accountable, too. So that's something we are, Becky and the finance team and Keith are monitoring, so that, you know, again, our, the recourse we have is financial.
Right, yeah, I was just gonna ask about that, like, as a customer, right? In a broader view, not just the app, but, you know, the driver shortage, a longer wait time. So as a customer, what is our power to kind of improve the performance? Is this the contract, and we have some reservation on the financial...
Yeah, so we're, I think the money is, money speaks loudly. So I think that is, that is what, that is our leverage. And then, just in general, the conversation we're having internally is, if we do the same thing, we can't expect different results. So if we continue to work with NRT, then we shouldn't be surprised about this level of service that we're experiencing. So the conversation we're having is, what are our alternatives for transportation? And unfortunately, I'd love to say, you know, there are 10 options. You know, when you read some of the resolutions, the MAS C resolutions, they're specifically about transportation and the monopoly that exists. So there's some larger structural issues that exist in the transportation market for public schools that we're navigating as well.
Has there ever been consideration to buying our own buses and running that ourselves?
So that is one of the areas, you know, that we'll be exploring. So I think it needs to be on the table, it needs to be a consideration. I am, I am a little concerned about buying buses that are running on gas.
Electric buses.
So I think as we look to EV buses, I think that is much more feasible and manageable for us to operate fleet and to manage a fleet because you don't have the maintenance you would when you have diesel.
Diesel engines.
Diesel engines. So that's something that we'll be exploring. So we have, we have a couple-hour meeting scheduled to talk about what are our options. The other challenge, not challenge, but the other factor is that when you look at how much Southborough pays for transportation, it is getting an amazing value for its dollar, for its transportation dollar because of the regional transportation reimbursement. Northborough also receives great value for a bus. An average bus costs most communities $75,000. Our cost for per bus is about $25,000, so it's...
And we wouldn't, that would, we would lose the reimbursement if we had our...
I think we need to do a financial analysis, like, how many buses does Southborough actually need? You know, and so there's a, there's a lot of work behind the scenes that we need to tackle.
Are you, are you factoring in a safety component options? Safety component options when you are looking at kind of what we could do in the future? Meaning whether we need bus monitors to actually sit there and make sure that we're enforcing behavior, positive behavior on a bus, that kind of thing?
Yeah, like, technology, I think technology has a, you know, I think Vermont right now is piloting Wi-Fi on buses. That has its own kind of work. But technology on buses, cameras to, you know, so we can actually see what's happening in order.
Right.
So we don't need, you know, 30 bus monitors on each bus, but we have a way to actually see what's happening. You know, the way we track our buses, again, we've talked about it. Amazon can track a package from distribution to doorstep and take a picture of it at your doorstep. There's no reason we can't do that with our students. So there's a whole layer of technology that we're looking at in terms of knowing where our kids are. So, so yes, and that has to be a factor.
Or even like having a dedicated person who gets on buses throughout the week just to reinforce how we're supposed to act, where we're supposed to sit. I mean, I think the schools do a nice job of that when they're at pickup and drop-off, but they're not on the bus during the ride, so, okay.
So what are other towns experiencing, like Shrewsbury, Hockenden?
Shrewsbury uses a much smaller AA transportation. The person lives in Shrewsbury, only kind of services Shrewsbury and a small few other towns.
Few other towns.
So they've actually had a long, they've had a, over, you know, two-decade partnership with. So I think they've had some success. And then Westboro, Framingham, Marlboro, Hudson, they're in the same, Berlin, Boston. They're in this, they're probably having the same exact conversation in their school community today.
Roger, you had a question?
I do. Commenting on the Amazon package delivery, it's when they say, well, we handed it to a person that was there. It kind of, you know, you mentioned the resolutions. When I started to read the resolutions, I was pretty sure that this whole meeting was about transportation. And it really took me, I had to get to the third page, I think, before, before there was something that had to do with something other than transportation. And when you mentioned the service-level agreements and the monetary penalties, I suspect, Keith probably knows this better than I do, that the parent that was, maybe it was one of the two parents, Jen being one, I'm not sure if this is, you know, with one of the two buses, I guess, or the, they probably don't even, they don't even care about whatever monetary fee we extracted from the bus company, right? It's good to have, but I wonder, do you think it's effective?
I think, no, I think from our customers, our students and our families, they don't care about service-level agreements, absolutely not. They care that their kids get picked up on time, get to school on time safely, and get home on time safely. But for us, as a, you know, running a business and organization, there's no other lever that we have other than the money.
Right.
So, you know, so yes, I think it's really important because without it, we have no leverage. But from a customer, that's, it's irrelevant to them, really, and it should be.
Yeah, you hope it's not irrelevant to the vendor, but I would imagine they're trying to do what they can do, but I guess there may be some other issues that...
Potentially.
Any other questions or discussion? Next item on the agenda is legislative update.
So just a quick update, and that is that for the first time in a few years, we've heard about 9C cuts as a potential. So when projected revenue is less than projected spending, basically, the governor has the ability to, there's no supplemental budget to implement 9C cuts. Now, I don't think that will directly impact, if that does happen, par Chapter 70 aid for education, but it could impact town, which can have a waterfall effect on us. So it's just something that... So it's just something that we're, it's the first time we've heard about it in a, a long time, I think. Yeah. So it's just an interesting, I think it's a signal. I think it's an interesting kind of signal for us to keep an eye on and think about as we head into the FY twenty-five budget season. And also to, to be conservative in how we look at our FY twenty-four expenditures moving forward.
Questions? Thank you. So next up is school improvement plans.
So this evening we have, again, our principals who will be sharing their action plans for this coming school year. And then Principal Hershak will be presenting at an upcoming meeting. We thought just, it's a lot, so. Having an elementary and then a middle school presentation allows us, us to process and go through the, the information more clearly. So I will turn it over to the principals for their update.
Thank you, Greg. All of our goals center around leading the district in making progress towards vision twenty twenty-six. Educate, inspire, challenge, in align with strategic plans of five strategic objectives. Empowering learners, equity of opportunity, healthy and balanced learners, educator learning and leadership, and finance and operations to support teaching and learning. We focused our three goals and action steps on empowering learners, equity of opportunity, and healthy and balanced learners. And over the next four hours, we'd like to provide you with an update of our work over the past year. Each of us will be speaking about our collective progress for each of our three goals, beginning with Principal Mulchi.
Thank you, Principal Ryan. So I'll be speaking about empowering learners, and we have two goals within that. The first is to provide opportunities for students and educators to use technology to solve problems and learn to communicate. And then our second arm, that, that goal is developing and deepening our knowledge and understanding of wit and wisdom comprehensive ELA curriculum. We continue to implement instructional practices that engage students in developing and demonstrating their knowledge and skills through rigorous, innovative, and relevant learning experiences. Teachers regularly collaborate to share lessons that integrate the DLCS standards, so that's the digital literacy and computer science standards, into grade level curriculum. Across schools, we are implementing technology within specialty areas, such as working with our music department to create 3D printed learning aids for strings, grade level research projects, robot coding, green screen projects, and slide presentations, just to name a few. Through collaboration with the literacy, with, excuse me, through collaboration with the library and media specialists, instructional technology specialists, and grade level colleagues, we will continue to create highly engaging lessons. For the twenty-three, twenty-four academic year, we will increase opportunities for our IT specialists to plan and deliver instruction through a co-taught model and with classroom teachers. We will also continue to provide training and job embedded learning opportunities related to DLCS standards. Through our partnership with Great Minds, and as part of our curriculum rollout, teachers have engaged in collaborative planning sessions based on the learning modules within the Wit and Wisdom comprehensive ELA curriculum. Throughout the year, educators will also engage in reflective conversations regarding the design and implementation of the lessons within the Wit and Wisdom, within Wit and Wisdom, in order to make adjustments to practices that will meet the needs of all learners. Through our work in professional learning communities, the ELA Council and Megan Kelty, grade level teams have engaged in thoughtful conversations to problem solve and create a shared understanding and vision of effective literacy instruction. Overall, we are making solid progress towards meeting this goal and the action steps embedded within. Now over to Principal Valenti, who's going to talk about equity of opportunity.
Thank you, Principal Mulchi. Equity of opportunity, we have one goal within it, which is to maintain inclusive classroom communities and school environments that provide equal access to learning for all students and meet their individual needs. We recently completed our implementation of the universal screeners, the PELI, which is preschool early literacy indicators for pre-K, and DIBELS, which is dynamic indicators of basic early literacy skills for K through five, and use the data to establish small group targeted interventions and supports. For our new Wit and Wisdom curriculum in grades K through five, we're working in grade level teams to establish protocols and processes to collaboratively analyze results while continuing to promise monitor students and determine instructional pathways. We have continued to implement the ST Math instructional program for grades K through five. All students engage in ST Math for fifteen minutes per day. These are protected times in teacher schedules and are part of the time on learning minutes for math. As part of the One Eight Foundation ST Math Grant, our math champions have taken the lead on tracking each student's total journey of puzzle completion, which allows students to work at their own pace. Each month, our champions share out the progress made by classrooms and the whole school, and we are each pleased to announce that all of our schools met September's targeted goal. During one of our professional, district professional development days in August, all staff engaged in professional learning time, which focused on our new social and emotional curriculum, second step, ST Math and Wit and Wisdom. Strategies and processes learned in these trainings will continue to help educators develop and implement coherent systems for collecting and using student, student learning data to better understand the needs of individuals and groups of students. In connection to the second step curriculum, we will be providing parents updates on each of the four units, which are growth mindset, growth mindset and goal setting, emotional management, empathy and kindness, and problem solving in our parent score newsletters, in order to extend the learning at home by sharing strategies and common language embedded in each unit. Overall, we are making solid progress towards meeting this goal and the action steps embedded within. I'm going to hand this over to Principal Ryan.
Thank you, Principal Valenti. In our last focus area is healthy and balanced learners, prioritizing social and emotional, physical well-being of our students. We continue to develop our shared understanding of the essential components of the CASL frameworks. CASL stands for the Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning. A vital part of our work last year was the addition of social, emotional learning, SEL leaders within each of our schools. Our SEL leaders were instrumental in supporting the district's SEL vision and make developmentally appropriate recommendations for each of our schools. Our social, emotional learning leaders also worked collaboratively with Dr. Lipton O'Connor, the district's SEL coordinator, to identify activities students could engage in throughout the day, as well as introduce the five CASL components to our student communities. An initiative we started last year at Finn, which is now happening at Woodward in Erie, is the goal of becoming a more mindful school environment. A licensed mindfulness instructor and also Southboro resident Emma Baralini will continue to be working with our schools by attending staff meetings, modeling lessons for teachers in classrooms to promote an understanding of mindfulness and its importance. We all recognize the importance of teaching students how to relieve, how to relieve and control negative feelings and emotions, promote relaxation, build cognitive abilities, help train the brain, and plant seeds for self-help that will last students a lifetime. Additionally, each of us has expanded our monthly SEL assemblies to include a regular community component. Each month's SEL themes included themes of the power of giving, be it donations for the Southboro Food Pantry or other outside organizations whose missions were to help the underserved or disadvantaged populations. In March of last year, all three of our schools took an active part in celebrating National SEL Day with a series of week-long SEL-themed activities. We've also reestablished more community and family involvement in our schools, soliciting connections with our fire and police departments and our families. And as mentioned previously, we've adopted the new second step SEL curriculum, K through five. And in preschool, we use a CASL endorsed, evidence-based program called ALSS. And again, we're making very solid progress towards meeting our, this goal and the action steps embedded within. Thank you, and we're ready for any questions or comments.
So I have a question, a general question. Do you all find that these, that your, the plans that you have for your school improvement within this, you know, within, within the goals fit the budget priorities that we have listed? And if there's any, and maybe you can speak, and maybe Greg, this would be an answer for you as we go through the, a question for you. As we go through the budget process, I believe like principals give you their asks for, are those asks fit into, you know, their ideal, like what we would love to have, fit into like the school improvement plans and how we can support moving forward with the improvement plans?
So I think that when the operational budget subcommittee met, was it, when was it? Last week, Friday, I think, class Friday, this past Friday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday?
Wednesday.
A lot of meetings. So the, kind of the general overview that I provided really was feedback from principals. So, so the answer is yes, that I think that it aligns with principals' asks when it comes to budget priorities.
Other questions?
This is for any of you, or all of you can answer separately if you, if you'd like. What is the feedback you've gotten from your staff and faculty on Wit and Wisdom? Is it kind of what you would expect, you know, six weeks into the school year? How's it going? And, and do you feel like it's aligning with what you would expect out of your goals here?
I get the starch. I think with anything new, it's, change can be a little challenging. And the balanced literacy approach that we've had for years is now being scrapped, is being ineffective. And taking on something new that is so global and comprehensive, not just Wit and Wisdom, but a new approach for everyone is a little unnerving. Wit and Wisdom was vetted by our staff members last year, and they looked at numerous programs, numerous approaches, and they landed on Wit and Wisdom. So it was, you know, vetted by our staff. They're doing the work. They're doing a lot of PD, getting into the classrooms. I saw a lesson today in grade one, and it was incredible the amount of, I, I think about it as like graduate coursework, where, you know, in undergrad, you're doing a lot of memorization and you're fact finding. This is discussion based, and you're, you're looking at big picture themes and having these discussions. And kids are challenging themselves in the classroom on a level that we may not have seen so overtly before in the teaching. And it's impressive, and we're slowly getting there. I think the more they're doing it, the more they're seeing the benefit.
I agree.
We'll just add a few things here. So I would agree with what Principal Ryan had shared. I think anytime there's a new curriculum, there are some growing pains that would take place. I think that's natural in any subject area or content. I do think that the student discourse that's part of Wit and Wisdom is, is impressive. Yes, two days ago, I was in a classroom and saw Socratic seminars happening in, with third graders. So they're hearing the ideas of others, they're responding, they're sharing their own thoughts and making their own inferences. I think that level of student discourse has, you know, a great benefit of the program. I think the way that students are taking deeper dives into text and also artwork and poems and poetry is just something that's, that's new for everyone. So there is going to be, you know, a learning curve there. I do think that as we get more comfortable with this, as, you know, the, the years go by of using this curriculum, I think people will have a much greater level of comfort with it. But I think, again, I think that's natural and it's going to happen, seeing it happen with other curriculum that were adopted by districts.
I agree with both of your statements. I, I think it's also important to recognize we're fortunate to have the amount of teachers we do at each grade level because they've really banded together to approach this in a collaborative way, and they're working through each of the modules together to plan, be planful, align with each other's work, and really work through this, these growing pains together. So I think that's a real benefit in our district. It was really impressive to see in our whole school meeting the other day, where we were talking about making some decisions based on the bullying lesson that we provide, that we showed. And then Mrs. Had asked the students to be thinking about, is this bullying or not bullying? And students started to think, and they immediately engaged in a turn and talk activity, which comes right from what they're doing in Wit and Wisdom. So it was really impressive to see that they're transferring that information or, or that response to information that's being provided to them or asked of them. So, yes, I agree, real growing pains. But it's a celebration of, I, I think it's important for us to celebrate the teachers really embracing this as, as teams.
And I'm just going to jump in and, and build off of that to say that we are so fortunate to have the teachers that we have and the principals. It is a tremendous amount of work to make this big of a transition, and our teachers are working overtime, just putting in the effort, led by the ELA curriculum leaders and Megan Kelty, who are trying, we are trying to coordinate across both districts so that we're not duplicating efforts, and it's, you know, hard to stay far enough ahead. The feedback I have gotten from our Wit and Wisdom consultants is they've just been so impressed with the implementation process here in terms of, they, they just said there's a lot of things that our teachers are to, again, led by the, the curriculum group and Megan, are getting to in year one, that they often see happening in year two, other places, and year three. And that is a hundred percent the credit of the principals and the teachers and the effort. But my overall response would be it's really exciting to watch. The, the hard work is paying off, and so things like the Socratic seminar or the Notice and Wonder, all of these routines, if you're someone who gets to go across many grade levels, you get to see how they are woven and develop over years. And so the, that's also something that's new for the teachers to understand that they're contributing to this long range, these long range goals. And so it might not land in my classroom today, but over time, they're building these skills. And it, and that is, is really been fun to watch in the little bits that I've gotten to see already.
I just have a couple comments too. I think too, when you, when you think about a curriculum adoption, so it, it takes three to five years to really see the impact. So I think we're in week six, so it's really in its infancy. And teachers are working really hard. I will share that any curriculum adoption at an elementary level, fourth and fifth grade teachers, it's hard because students haven't developed that language, the routines, so they're having to kind of foster that. It can be challenging, but I think they're, they're doing a wonderful job. I also will share that there's a lot of news about the science of reading. So there were two Boston Globe articles. One was how many districts in the Commonwealth are using evidence-based ELI curriculum? And they published all the districts and what people are using. So this is a shift that all districts are making over time. We are ahead of the curve. And also I just want to point out that we've been making this shift for several years now with Hegarty Project Read. We have some foundational pieces, and we're excited where we are because it is truly moving in that direction. And when you think, when you hear about the news stories that are, that I've heard several in the past week around third grade reading scores. And, and ELA scores have, have plateaued since the pandemic. Math have rebounded, and, and the question is why? And in some of the districts that have actually rebounded in ELA to a grade, we're still asking why. But some of it is that they're using more evidence-based, science-based resources. So that's my addition to the, to my comments.
I think, so you had a question, and then I'll go to you, unless it's connected.
It's connected.
Go ahead.
I'm so glad, I'm so glad the question was asked, because the responses to the question and additional information, I just have so much more substance, I think, of understanding, okay, of this than I would have had. Great question.
Thank you.
Well, I just have a curious question for Principal Mulchi, about the 3D printed teaching aids. So what are some of the examples, and do you use your own 3D printer?
So if I could, Ms. Valenti, was that your component, the 3D printer?
Oh, yes.
Yes, so, so that was, so we're utilizing different technology components, but that particular example came from the Erie School. So I would just let Ms. Valenti speak to that.
Thank you. We have a 3D printer, which we were using quite a bit with our last instructional technology teacher. She wrote a grant, and we were able to secure that and bring that into school. So our new IT specialist, she's new to us, this is her second year, but not new to the district. So our new IT specialist, she's new to us, this is her second year, but not new to the district. So she is working on developing some lessons where students will be using the 3D printing. So it's, we just got it up and running, but what happens is they, some of, a lesson might focus on, it's in collaboration with our librarian, our library media specialist. They'll launch with a book, and then students will, one of the books they use is, I think, what's a big, what is an idea? That's what it was launched off of. And students developed, there was writing and research and thinking about what an idea looks like, and they ended up creating 3D models of their idea. It's exciting.
Yeah, it is. If you need a, if you need a teaching assistant, you're looking at one here.
Excellent.
I'm a, does 3D printing at home, so.
Well, she's actually going to, so it's Mrs. Perrin, who's our IT specialist, and she's actually partnering with RAP for a session coming up in the next session with 3D printing. So we're excited about that.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Could I just make one last comment, the final word? That I think these goals that they've established are pretty ambitious for this year. When you think about implementing Witten Wisdom, talking about ST math, talking about Second Step. So there's also a fine balance between, you know, we have amazing teachers, and there's a fine balance of changing too much, too quickly. So I think we are right at that threshold. So I just want to acknowledge the work of the principals, the ambitious goals that they have, but also our teachers, that our teachers are the ones who are working directly with our students. And they're extremely professional, hardworking, and really doing an exceptional job. But it by no means is this status quo work that we're doing. And we can't, we can't do this every year. We can't, we can't, every year change at this rate. There needs to be some type of cadence where we let teachers get comfortable again with what they're teaching.
Thank you. Is this the point where we can let, or should we keep going through new business?
The only, there's the mold mitigation, I don't know if it's the will of the committee to move that mold mitigation update, so Principal Ryan can just be in attendance for that conversation.
We don't need a vote on that, right? We can just, yes, go ahead.
You can do it.
So let's, so let's move that up, and I will turn that over to you.
Sure. So Finn Elementary School has experienced an issue with mold in many of the classrooms. So as a result of learning that there is a mold issue, we did hire Hub Testing Laboratory, which is an environmental company, to actually help guide us through the process of mitigating environmental conditions and cleaning the mold. One of the questions we did ask the environmental consultant is, is it safe for us to be in the building? Should we evacuate? Should we move? And she was very clear. She said, "If I thought it was unsafe to be in this building or faculty, staff, students, I would tell you, I would not hesitate to tell you." But she did say that you need to take the mitigation steps seriously and move as quickly as possible. So the mitigation steps that she recommended that we followed quickly were cleaning, following a mold mitigation protocol. So we had our cleaning team, custodians around Northboro, the region, and Southboro, working a weekend and really doing a substantial portion of that cleaning that took place. Sue Boyle came in, inspected, following the cleaning, and then recommended having a professional mold mitigation company come in and do an inspection and do touch-up cleaning. That did take place. And then the past week, she's been inspecting their work, and also she took samples, air-quality samples, and received the results of those samples, and the samples are much improved to where she would expect. She also stated that the conditions in the building are up to their standards, up to what they expect. So that was kind of a stop-gap measure to deal with the current conditions. We also, we also are evaluating the building to see if there's anything wrong with the systems, you know, drainage, heating, HVAC. So we did have an opportunity to look at the roof drains. So they received an all-clear, the roof drains are functioning properly. We just had a company come out to look at the perimeter drains to make sure that the water filtering to the perimeter drains are filtering as they should be. We're also adding dehumidification based on the consultant's recommendation to all classrooms. And she also is recommending air conditioning, so we are working on a plan to add air conditioning to all classrooms at Z-School, Finn School. And we, basically, her recommendation is that we need to make sure the systems are working properly and then have ways that we can control the indoor environment. That with that amount of rainfall that happened over the summer, it's, you know, she has seen mold appear in schools all over the Commonwealth, and that the way we can control it is by controlling the environment. So I think, moving forward, I think some of the investigations that we're doing around the perimeter drains are yielding some potential actions, action plans and action steps, again, to make sure that it doesn't happen again. This is, this is not inexpensive work, but it's necessary work. This is not something that we had, you know, an emergency fund in our operational budget to address these unexpected issues. We have filed an insurance claim, our conversation with an insurance agent, I would characterize as promising. And I also have been in contact with Town Administrator Mark Purple and have been keeping him informed of the work that has taken place thus far. And lastly, I just want to thank Finn School and teachers, and, you know, this is not, again, being an educator, being a great educator's hard work, and then when you throw something like this into the world of their responsibility, it is even more challenging. But they have handled it very professionally, they've been very accommodating, and also parents have, you know, asked great questions of us and have been very supportive of getting this work done.
Do we have any idea what the long-term cost impact is, like air conditioning and everything?
We have a few initial estimates. That's part of what we're, looking at all the options that are available. We did some similar work at the Proctor School in Northboro not too long ago, so we have that kind of as a baseline to follow. And we're still contemplating all the different possibilities with that to make sure we're making a good decision. Fortunately, we're coming into less humid months and hopefully, less rain. So hopefully, the conditions will improve by just the outside environment supporting it. We have seen with cool nights and things like that, it definitely has improved the overall condition. But we are still running humidifier, dehumidifiers as much as possible, and we are able air-conditioning.
So our initial quote's about $35,000 to add window air conditioners to all the buildings. It's highly inefficient to cool a building of that size, so, but that is something that, a short-term solution to being able to control environments, and then I think, you know, I think as a community and as a district, we'll have to talk about what is the longer-term plan, not just for Finn, but Woodward, Near East, and Traviar, because they existed in the same conditions this summer. They just didn't have mold, and mold can be unpredictable at times.
And was, did, was that looked into, the other, the rest of the schools after? Other questions? Yes, Roger.
See, when I, we talked about the cost, and that's one of the things that struck me, is I've kind of watched some of the communications, as you said, this is, this is not going to be inexpensive. And being as budget is, like, one of the few things in the handful of items that are the purview of the school committee. So we're funding that how? I know that there's a possibility of insurance, and so how are we going about this?
We haven't covered some money in the operational budget.
Which must come from something.
Yes, we will be looking at it, and I may have to accept that. But the hope is, like you said, that Mario will approve our claim, and we'll be able to utilize those ones.
So it's kind of a work-in-process right now, as far as the funding aspect of it, and then we'll find out more?
Yeah, so our, so our plan is, we initially incurred $75,000 just as a kind of a placeholder in our operational budget. We are pursuing insurance, so we're hoping to get an answer, you know, shortly. And then my conversations with Town Administrator Mark Purple is that, you know, this is not something that is in our budget. Like, we're going to have to go outside of our budget and ask for some relief. So that is a conversation that I've had, but it's really right now too early to talk about the pathway we need to take.
Understood. Thank you.
In terms of the air conditioning, I assume that the, if we were to go the road of spending the $35,000 or whatever the quote is, that the company that we hired would recommend that we do it before May?
Correct.
So that would be in this fiscal year as well, so that's going to bump that number up. I have a question about snow, and I don't know if it's relevant or not.
Bring it on.
But.
Frozen water.
Well, I'm thinking the classrooms that have an exterior, whatever that unit is on the outside, you know, their HVAC or whatever, and if snow builds up against, especially thinking about an area that is like that newer wing, where we probably have snow plows actually push, potentially pushing it against the building, because I know there's parking spots there. Is there any concern around snow buildup on the exterior of the building? And do we need to be proactive in removing that so that when the water melts, or the wa, the snow melts into water, that we don't have sitting water?
Well, we aren't getting any snow this winter.
Yeah, that's not happening.
Taking care of it.
Those routines and procedures already exist, whether it be with DBW and our contractors to make sure that, you know, the, the snow is actually not piled against the building at all. And that inspection is done with our head custodian, the facilities manager, at all the buildings, to make sure that vents are properly aerated and everything else, like we would do at our own home. So it's not definitely any different than, you know, what we do for ourselves. I do think that those plans have to be carefully aligned, like sometimes we do have a contractor that's not used to our buildings. So it's not just assumed, it is something that is inspected every time we do have the snow to make sure that we are properly ventilating the buildings, and it's key for that, to keep the air moving.
One of the questions, you know, we are, we've asked is, does the Finn Elementary School have the proper drainage, the size drainage, in that area of the building? So that's something we're exploring. And then just I'll make a general comment around snow, since you brought it up. And that is that if the precipitation amounts continue like they have been over the summer.
Right, you're telling me.
This, I'm very concerned. Because we are talking about not a foot of snow, not two feet of snow, we're talking about four feet. But I'm going to remain optimistic.
Sounds like it.
Let the minister, Chelsea, go there.
Just one other comment, sorry. If you could thank your facilities team as well for all their weekend work and diligence in cleaning the building. I know that families were very happy with the communication that was provided by you and Principal Ryan, as well as the urgency to get the building cleaned those first two weekends. So I know that was a big task, as well as for all the support from the Finn faculty and staff.
Thank you. It was, they, faculty took it very seriously. They were communicating with us nonstop as to how things progressed in terms of the mold blooming or blossoming or progressing. And then the district's response, based on experience at Proctor, was incredible. And I can't say enough about the response, not only just the district in general, but as you pointed out, the Facilities Department headed by Keith and coordinated by Brian Fantoni in rallying all the staff that were here on the weekend. We had 45 people on one Saturday, it was incredible. All geared up, ready to go, and attacking the mold, so.
Yes, really, it's really great, thanks. Thanks for the update. Just a question, will there be a follow-up check next summer to see the effectiveness?
Yes, so some of the action items that remain too will be working with Sue Boyle, our consultant, around updating our mold mitigation protocols, retraining, and then just monitoring. And then, you know, when we do see mold, how do we respond in a way that we can address it in, in real time versus letting it become a real issue?
Is it mostly just by visual inspection, or there'll be some, you know, more proactive inspection approach? Because sometimes you don't see it, right? But when you see it, it becomes severe.
Yeah, so I think that training, again, around, you know, how do you, you know, what are you looking for? You know, so Sue Boyle's doing some training with all of our custodians. She's doing a training video, like what an inspection should look like, what are we looking for? What are the signs? And then I think, you know, we have her on, you know, speed dial and retainer. She is our, she is our expert, and we're taking her lead. So she has some other recommendations for us that we'll be implementing as well.
And follow-up on the, on the expense, so will there be an expense report for this whole project?
Yeah, so I think I did share with the committee kind of what estimate expense and then where we are currently. So it's still kind of a dynamic document as we move through, but we will, we will be adding, I think at the November meeting, and update exactly what it's going to cost us, and we'll present that at the next meeting.
Thanks.
Great, so at this point, can we let our principals leave? Thank you very much. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the South Works Sunday Day Program update.
So I'm going to start the update with some programming, so how the, how the start of the year has gone for our students and staff, and then we'll discuss a few administrative topics just to kind of round it out for everyone. So these are Carrie's words, the SEDP has hit the soggy ground running, no pun intended on our last conversation. However, the rain has allowed the staff to really instill some good, strong routines to get back into the actual programming of things. And it does include the usage of time for homework and other types of activities. But one of the key pieces that has developed is really getting into some creative projects that Carrie and her team have explored. Typically, the start of the year is a lot of outdoor time for SEDP, and obviously, with all of us, we haven't had that advantage, so that has provided some unique opportunities. So they have explored some new games, had a few dance parties, but then when the weather did allow, they got out there as, as much as possible, which, like I said, I think we all benefited from over the last month and a half or so. The other piece I think is worth noting for the programming, as far as the start of the year is concerned, is the staff did embrace a few new projects, few new art techniques. In addition, the Near East staff incorporated some fun STEM activities and challenges for their, for their students, for our fourth and fifth graders. So it really rounded out a nice first six weeks of programming. It did begin on the first day of school and did support families during some of the days off that we had in the last six weeks. So certainly, an appreciation to the staff and students for a smooth start. On the administrative side, things I want to touch on are staff training, which has been a key highlight, some upcoming projects that Carrie and her team are working on with support of other departments, enrollment projections, what they're seeing so far, and certainly, staff appreciation. So as far as the training is concerned, all staff are part of our typical annual trainings that all staff participate in, which are key and are evolving every year. Carrie also leads the team in some other protocol trainings to make sure they're aligned with district policies and such, especially school safety, which is obviously a key piece when they're after school and before school. And it's not very different than what the principals do with their opening faculty meeting. And it's not very different than what the principals do with their opening faculty meetings. It is aligned, was able to share an agenda our principals have with Carrie, and she's kind of led it in a similar fashion. So that type of alignment is ongoing. I would say that one of the highlights of the training was Safety Care. Safety Care is our de-escalation program that supports students that are having a difficult time to bring behaviors back into compliance and not only doing it, but in a safe manner. We were able to practically double our capacity of SCP staff having that training and the full training. So it provides Carrie with more flexibility. So when she has students that are not able to, you know, be in compliance, you know, throughout the programming, she can have staff and backup staff. That wasn't always the case. So that's a genuine enhancement that was made and a priority for the end of the year that Carrie and her team have capitalized on, and we've already seen the benefit of that rolled out in the first couple of weeks. As far as upcoming projects, this year Carrie has a few things that are on her plate to develop with our support. The first is finalizing the development of a staff handbook. There was an SCP staff handbook with the prior organization, now we're doing a new one and modifying it using some of the things we already have in district, which is more aligned with our ESPs. They have a handbook with support, with our student support services, and that's gonna be modified to make it for our SCP staff, and that's gonna be something ongoing for the next month or so. We also, Carrie and her team with myself, as well as a few central office admins, are streamlining the human resources process. One thing we have learned is a lot of staff get hired and move in and out to transient group because of their availability, so we are noticing that and trying to streamline processes. So that's definitely something that we're looking at, as well as the ongoing piece of the financial side of things, how we're getting them the materials and the support that they need in a timely manner. Beck and her team have been incredibly flexible, we're making sure that our district policy's aligned with the things they can and can't do, and that's been something we've been working on for a year and will continue to. Onto enrollment, it's not very different than last year, although it has increased in some places, and it's a typical pattern. Our Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday for all sites is practically full, and Mondays and Fridays are, you know, percentage points lower just because families have different things that they're doing. So we haven't seen any type of anomaly when it came to enrollment, it's been pretty steady with increases in spots. So Carrie is pleased with that, and, you know, there are days where we are at capacity, which is not different from what existed before from prior years. And lastly, I want to share just the appreciation for the staff, you know, whether it be five raining days in a row or different curveballs that are thrown to them, they have been very adaptive. Carrie and I have been communicating frequently about different things that have occurred. Our staffing has stabilized this fall. We've had a few openings that we haven't been able to fill, and those are being done creatively to make sure that the proper support is in place at all sites. So we are off to a good start, and like I said, we do have some projects that we are identifying. And at the end of this month, we're bringing our parent advisory board back in for a meeting on October twenty-fourth to really bring that all together and work on a survey for parents about the experience so far. So it has been a year and a couple months, and it's a good time to kind of check in with folks to see how we're doing, what else is needed. Overall, the transition, this is the way I would characterize it, I think we've moved out of that transition phase, and we are getting more into, okay, what are the things we can focus on and improve? So I'm happy with where we are and what we're, you know, planning for in the next couple of months.
Okay. Any questions, discussion? Thank you. So we move on to our Wellness Committee update. Over here by myself. So with the focus on promoting healthy and balanced learners, the Wellness Committee is dedicated to establishing and maintaining an environment that promotes and supports habits of wellness, healthy lifestyle choices, and the social and emotional wellbeing of the entire school community. That is our goal, our main goal of our Wellness Committee.
Can I ask, could I interrupt?
Yes.
So who is on the Wellness Committee? Again, could you remind me of that?
Sure. So our Wellness Committee is made up of a lot of people.
Okay.
It is, I can start naming them, I probably will forget some. It is our cafeteria managers, directors of food services, directors of food services, both Kyle and the high school director of food services. It is many guidance counselors, it is PE teachers, health teachers, the police department, the health departments, youth and family services departments, students. So there are a lot of people, and I'm sure I forget, there's school committee liaisons.
Dr. Medina.
Dr. Medina, is he on it? No?
Dr. Medina is on it, yeah, so.
Thank you.
We are missing a few people though, so we'll put a call out to some people. So last year, we were in a rebuilding and revitalization phase, that purpose being networking, education, prevention, and cohesion. We had three main subcommittees, that was the Wellness Policy, the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey, and Wellness Week. Updating the Wellness Policy was our main goal for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, and we accomplished that. Our other committee explored the Metro West Adolescent Health Data and began to develop a roadmap for future sharing of the data with all of our stakeholders. The Northborough/Southborough Wellness Week was a success even though a few of the activities got rained out, but that was totally a collaboration of many, many departments in both towns that put on the events of Wellness Week. What we did realize in our post-evaluation is that we should not do it in May when there's MCAS, and it was the opening week of baseball, I think that week too, so there was a lot going on. So we also collaborated with the town health departments and family and youth services to bring speakers in for students and parents. We had a speaker come in with teen marijuana use, athlete's mental health, and raising resilient kids. Looking forward to this year, our first meeting is next Thursday, we meet virtually on the third Thursday of the month at three, it's kind of easy for me to remember. So, and we'll be discussing our goals and plans for the upcoming year, some ideas that we left in June with, was promoting a focus on health and wellness and offering wellness activities on our district wellness days, collaborating with and supporting the food directors in exploring more farm-to-table options and a variety and diversity in our food offerings, continuously to evaluate our wellness policy that we just updated, increase stakeholder participation in the Wellness Committee, plan for student and parent speaker events, and in collaboration with Encompass, which is our Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, create a student group to look at the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey, and create student-focused groups, and continue to work with other town departments and committees to promote health and wellness in our schools as well as our community at large. And we're looking forward to another successful Wellness Week in 2024. I'm happy to answer any questions. Questions?
It's a large committee.
Yeah, it is a very large committee. There's like thirty, forty people on the invite or something.
Yeah, it just seems like it's, it's gotta be, it's gotta be a little unwieldy, I would think, but you answered the question I was going to answer, which is, when do you meet? So you said it's a third.
So I think that it's, one of our main goals was not to repeat what other committees are doing, because a lot of people on that committee or on other committees too that have to do with wellness but aren't the Wellness Committee. So part of our meetings are updates of what's going on with our other committees in town that have to do with the other people that are involved in those committees. So there's a lot to look forward to in the upcoming, we just got a drug-free community grant, so that's, we're interviewing people next week for a position, so that will be a great asset to both of our communities.
I have a small question, does the Health and Wellness Committee also think about or talk about, like, is staff and teacher health and wellness, or is it focused primarily on student health and wellness?
I think it's everybody, staff, students, and our community at large. Other questions? Thank you very much.
Oh, sorry, just curious, does the committee work with your, the Health Board at all? Is it other related?
So there's definitely overlap, and the staff in the Health Department sit on this committee as well as Dr. Medina, who's on Board of Health, as well as the school physician. And the Health Department was heavily involved in the drug-free community grant along with Mary Ellen's team and Northborough, and now we're in the process of actually hiring somebody to take over that role. So yes, there's a lot of overlap between the Health Department and the Wellness Committee, and you can correct me if I'm wrong.
No, you are absolutely right, that's why we try not to, you know, recreate the wheel in every meeting we have.
Yeah.
I believe that when we hire the new person for the drug, for Encompass, which will be leading from the drug-free community grant, they will be, sit on the Wellness Committee too.
So the Wellness Committee is more focused on the school?
It's school, it's community, it's students, teachers, so yes.
How about the residents, just, you know, other resident households, is that more on the?
That's more, that's probably more on the Health Department side. Yeah. But I think that there's, there's probably, I mean, the whole Wellness Week was school-related, and there were town events too, so there's definitely overlap with things that are offered.
Thank you. So next up is the School Committee presentation.
Sure, so Kamali and I had a chance to meet and just talk about kind of mapping out presentations for this year, I'm thinking about a two-year cycle, so this is a draft, this is a dynamic document, it can change, obviously, depending on what topics the committee would like to learn more about. But having a presentation cycle also allows Central Office to plan and communicate to people who will be presenting, so this is helpful. So this is our best thinking at this time, and it can be updated as we kind of move forward. We did think about really focusing on ELA because of the changes in the elementary ELA curriculum, and also mathematics, the changes in the middle school math program. So that was kind of the thinking behind for this year's presentation cycle.
Any discussion, questions?
So, this isn't really something that we've talked too much about in specifics, but Mary Ellen just mentioned food services as being part of the Wellness Committee, and I know that we're introduced, and I was actually surprised now that I think about, none of the principals mentioned that they're introducing breakfast in the morning. So I think I had one who had it today, and he was like thrilled, but I still don't know what he ate, so I don't know if it was more of a social event or if he actually consumed But I'm just curious kind of where we're at with food services, and if we could, I don't really know much about how it works from what our options are and how we operate from a food service perspective, so I don't know if that's something we can maybe throw into next year's cycle or something like that.
One thing that didn't make the agenda, and that is, Northborough is establishing a food services study group, and I created the same parallel study group, it's one and the same. So that will be in the next communication, that will, the study group really is to kind of evaluate the current food services program, think about the diversity of menu options, and think about how we can enhance and expand the food services department, so, and incorporate it into wellness. So I will be communicating, I probably will communicate that with Kamali, and Kamali through to the folks around the study group. It is, the membership will be Keith Boy, Colleen Parsons, the food service manager, a school committee member from Northborough, a school committee member from Southborough, a parent from Northborough, a parent from Southborough, a middle school student from Northborough, and a middle school parent, a student from Southborough. So that's kind of the, it's a smaller working study group, but that's what we intend to perform.
Okay, even better.
Well, so, a couple things. I like this, and I think this is the first year that this has happened, that there's been kind of a presentation cycle presented, so I think that's great. Chelsea, when you mentioned the food services, it almost sounded like you were kind of thinking about or wondering about, is there maybe an opportunity to have this presented in one of these meetings? Because I think the superintendent said this is a, this is a dynamic document, but before I, before I want you to answer that, is food services presented at a combined meeting? No, it's not, okay, so, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So my question, I think Greg's, what Greg explained is actually better than coming in to present to us. I like the idea of a working, it kind of like maybe skips a step by just getting into a study group. I think, you know, they, they were, they did, they did a great job during COVID with providing meals, and kind of now they're back to normal operations, and I think this is a great time to start looking at what options exist now that we know that meals are gonna continue to be provided for students and we're adding breakfast. So I, I think, I actually like this route better than having them come in to present, maybe they will present after the study is done.
So the timeline really is meeting monthly up until May, and then having recommendations presented to each Northborough School Committee and the Southborough School Committee in June for potential implementation of any potential changes for the upcoming school year.
Would you at least be able to let the committee know at the next meeting, what your child ate?
Yes. Yeah, I know, he was so excited about it.
What'd you find out?
I don't know how I know. Does Northborough have the same menu as Southborough? Okay.
Mostly, but there is, there is, there is a lot of overlap between the K eight for both Northborough and Southborough, yeah.
Okay.
So next up is the Report of the Resolutions Committee.
So in your packet is the resolutions that are being discussed at the MASCE/MASSS Joint Conference. The resolution, the delegation resolution meeting, caucus, is actually on Wednesday. Typically, it would be held on Friday after all of the events and sessions, so it actually makes it a little bit more accessible. We do have a member from the Northborough Committee attending, and the Regional Committee attending that delegation meeting. And, you know, I did identify the resolutions that I think are important to support, and I can go over those really quickly.
Three of the five transportation.
Yeah, so transportation bidding, so really having the auditor, state auditor look at transportation bidding. Districts that are going out to bid for transportation are getting one bidder, and therefore there's not a lot of choice. So really investigating kind of the bidding procedures and what needs to change, so that is one. Then there is regional transportation, so under the regional transportation, the reimbursement rate is supposed to be at a hundred percent. It has not been at a hundred percent, so this resolution really speaks to the difference of what is not reimbursed, allowing districts to charge for transportation to students on differential. I don't think the Regional School Committee has an appetite for that, but I think it's supportive of how do we make up the shortfall in what is supposed to be funded and the difference. Yeah, there is mass school building authority, so there is an eight-hundred-million-dollar cap on funding MSBA projects, so this removes that cap, and it also really emphasizes restarting the accelerated repair project that was paused last year due to the projects that are underway and the unexpected impact of inflation on those projects that they're having to fund. And then lastly, Resolution Eight is really just a safety issue. It really is doing more work around educating families around safe storage of firearms, and I think the statistics around the number of children who are injured or commit suicide by guns each year is incredible, so this just speaks to really educating families around proper firearm storage and safety.
And did you talk about sex too?
Did I miss sex? So sex is...
The bus stop armed surveillance?
Yes.
Must be transportation.
So that is basically trying to make sure that kids are able to exit and enter... bus, the bus safely and adding video surveillance to buses just to actually have some recourse for those people who do not obey the traffic law and bypass that. This allows a greater level of accountability and recourse for those, those people who do not obey the law.
Can I ask a question about busing in general? So when you go out to bid for a transportation contract, do you have to go with the lowest bidder? Or like, is there?
It has to be the lowest responsible and responsive bidder. So if, like, for example, we do a reference check, it would kind of know that they're not irresponsible. We could throw that out, but yes, you do have to.
And that's the only criteria is the lowest bidder?
Yes.
So would this solve that?
So I think there's a lot of issues with transportation. There, there's some mass general law that prohibits districts from partnering with other districts around transportation. So there is, I think that getting the state auditor involved in the procurement process and actually investigate transportation and how it, and how it's organized across the Commonwealth. We'll get to some of those challenges.
I will say, I think they've started to do that because we were contacted at the regional level for copies of our documents. And they're reaching out just to regional school districts looking for that.
Other questions?
Yeah.
So is this, we're not talking about the delegate yet, are we? Not yet, sorry.
So just a, just a general comment about the resolution. So I think attending the MASC, MAS joint conference and part of the benefit of attending is you hear from other school committees and you get to build coalitions. You get to listen to what other school committees are challenged with. But by no means it is supportive of the resolution meaning that next year it's going to change. It's just like the first step in the legislative process. So a lot of the legislation that we're seeing move forward finally is actually from resolutions that were passed six or seven years ago. So it's a slow moving process. So even if a delegate, you know, even if a school committee doesn't send a delegate at that meeting, it's not, it's like just one of thousands of opportunities to advocate for what the committee wishes in terms of priorities.
A question about the, so the mean safety or the gun storage one. So that's something that the district could decide to do regardless, right?
In all of these issues, you know, again, we could take on transportation internal. There is a lot of, because, because it doesn't move as quickly as we need it to, doesn't mean that we have to wait for, wait for them to act. We can, you have a lot of flexibility as a local agency.
So how does it work at the, the meeting? Can you kind of, I mean, I've never met a lot of, so can you kind of go over the process?
So they review each, it's, it's a formal meeting, so it's, it's Robert's rules. So they, they read it, they make a motion, they read the resolution, there's a debate. And then they all, and then everyone gets to vote. So it's in the debate where you hear a lot of different perspectives and ideas.
And then if it passes by a majority, then it moves on to the next step?
That's what MASC will support in terms of advocating, advocating this to move forward.
Okay. Can I just ask a question on one that you didn't recommend? So Resolution seven unrelated to MCAS. Can you kind of speak to, and I guess this isn't really related to K eight, but can you speak to what your experience has been with MCAS tests at the high school level?
Yeah, I mean, I think that in our districts, MCAS is kind of the floor. It's, it's, it's a low bar.
Yeah.
It is, you know, it's, it's not the ceiling. We are not concerned with our students passing MCAS as, as a graduation requirement. We do have some students, you know, who do struggle passing the MCAS and we, we have resources and supports to help them kind of navigate that and make sure that they do pass. So it's not, I think MCAS is one, one measure, one metric of many that we use as a district. I think it's helpful data. I don't think it's the end all be all data. But I think there needs to be some type of graduation requirement that is kind of a baseline. And this is, for now, this is what it is.
Okay. Are you surprised that this is on the table?
I think when there is communities where there's a disproportionality of, you know, again, we're well-resourced.
Yeah.
When there are districts that aren't well-resourced, it, I could see why this is on.
Yeah.
Being discussed.
Yeah.
So now appointing, moving on to next item on the agenda, which is appointing the official delegate for MASC Annual Business Meeting. This requires a vote. Kamali is going, right?
Kamali is going.
I'm not sure if I'm going yet. I would like to try and go. I'm juggling some work things around. Is anyone else planning on attending?
It's a possibility. I'm not sure when the time runs out.
I think the registration is open to the very.
It's on the eighth, I think, right?
So the seventh, I think is, is fine.
Okay, okay.
And what, I'll just share what Northborough did. So they voted a school committee member as the primary delegate and the secondary. So if someone quit or couldn't go, they had a backup. But again, if, if you are a delegate and you don't show up, it's.
Well, I'm presuming since we know Kamali is going, that, that we would, after discussion, appoint her as a delegate because she's made that commitment.
Has she's already registered, correct? So I think it makes sense to, we can appoint her even though she's not here.
It's the best time to appoint people.
So how do we do this? Do I do this through a motion? So I'll accept a motion to appoint Kamali as the official delegate for the MASC Annual Business Meeting.
So move.
Second.
All in favor? Oh, wait, any discussion? All in favor? And it's unanimous. And now on to old business.
So MSBA update, so the NAREY Building Committee continues to move, move for its work forward. So the committee met on October 2nd, which I believe was, I'm really old about dates. A week ago from this Monday. We also had, we're in the process of designer selection. So we had designer firms come and visit NAREY School in the afternoon. And Becky, you had how many?
I would say probably about 25 different firms.
More than we've had before for those type of committees.
So significant amount of interest, which is excellent. And then the committee met later in the evening. Although I did not attend, the, the purpose of the meeting was to create subcommittees. So there's a finance, communication, subcommittee, and designer selection subcommittee that was also formed. Maybe I should ask people who attended the meeting.
Well, I think the designer selection subcommittee was already formed. And I think the one that was formed was the communications subcommittee, I believe. If I'm recalling correctly, since I'm on it.
And we're moving, yeah. And really, the designer selection process is taking place. So we are moving toward a meeting with MSBA on December 7th, or begin, early, early December. Where MSBA will interview firms and actually make a recommendation for us to move forward to hire a design firm. So that's the next milestone that we're looking at.
Yeah, there's a subcommittee. I believe the, I think I just saw something from Jim that said that bids are going to come in on the 20th. They'll come in on the 20th and then, then they'll be read after that.
So progress. And that is, any questions about MSBA update?
So on to the 2023-24 Subcommittee and Liaison Assignments. Any updates to that?
Just a, just a question. How did I get on nine of these?
You weren't there, so we nominated you. Would you like to change anything?
Well, in all fairness, two of them are alternate, so there's only seven, okay? You've got five and they're, they're all, they're all not alt, they're not alt, they're real, so.
I mean, there's only five of us, so I think we're all going to be on quite a few of them, but.
The only one that I would add is the Food Services.
Oh, right.
Because we are activating that, I think it just would be helpful to identify a member who may be interested.
I'd be happy to do it.
What do you know?
Sure. My kids.
Don't need to vote. It's just magically will appear on the next list.
Any other comments or discussion? Okay, so we can move on now to the superintendent's report to the committee.
So in your packet is the enrollment report as of September 15th, 2023. If you look at the variance sheet, some of the work that we're trying to move on is when, when do we unenroll students who, who we know are not going to be attending school in the upcoming academic year? We have developed some internal procedures and we're working on those, but we're, it's still an imperfect system. You'll notice that, for example, in kindergarten, we have five less students than the September 15th report. And then you'll also see some variation in grades six and seven. So at the middle school, we're working on kind of process, internal process. And then in full day K, we're also kind of revisiting that to make sure that we have accurate enrollment projections as we look at class size and placement heading in from August to, to September.
Questions?
So mold mitigation, box that up. And then I'll turn it over to Becky for the FY24 Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report, Grants Update, and ESR Funds and Revolving Accounts.
So during the month of September, the finance team, when we did go through the fiscal year 24 budget, we went through line by line and made sure that we did encumber all of the funds that we anticipate utilizing for this, for the current school year. As a result, you will notice that we have $500,042 on the bottom line or 2.17% remaining. And that's as of September 30th. Last year at this time, we did have 3.56% remaining or $793,681. So I feel like we really have done a great job at looking at those line items and making sure that we have anticipated everything that we know to be true. The one line item that I do just want to really point out to you is that in the building maintenance fin line item, that is where we have encumbered those funds that we talked about for the mold mitigation, and that is $75,000. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that over the past few years, we've really done a lot of work to make sure that our accounts align with the DESI chart of accounts. So we've been making some corrections. There are a couple that I do want to point out to you. The first is on page nine, and that is account number 2320, which is for medical therapy specialists. So this line item includes salaries for specialists such as physical therapists, OT, SLPs. And this was budgeted when we were planning our budget in the teacher special education salary line item. So the money is, is budgeted in another line item. However, again, this will help us to really align with that chart of account. The other correction that we have made, and I think that there was a question about this last month, is with the special education transportation, where we have split out the summer transportation from our regular school year transportation. But again, that money was budgeted in a regular year, so that will offset that line item being over. This alignment really does help us when we get ready to prepare our interview report that we need to submit to DESI every September 30th. Just a few highlights from September 24th.
Any questions? So we need, this is a vote, right? So I will accept a motion, excuse me, to approve the fiscal year 2000, to FY24 Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report.
Until audited?
Until audited, thank you.
Second? Motion.
So is there a motion? Do you move? Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? And it's unanimous.
Next is the Grants Update. So what we've included in your packet is an accounting of all the grants that we have received so far in fiscal year 2024. This includes the federal entitlement grants, titles one, two, two A, I should say, three and four, as well as our IDEA special education and our early childhood special education program grants. These six grants total $499,092, which is an increase of $20,673 over fiscal year 23. We've also received a state grant, and that is the High Quality Instructional Materials Grant. And that will support the adoption of new core instructional math materials. And that includes professional development. So at this time, I would ask the committee to vote to accept these very beneficial grants.
Any questions or discussion? Do I have to name the grants in the motion? Can I just say?
As presented.
As presented, okay, thank you. So I will take a motion to accept the grants as presented in our packet.
For the total amount, maybe?
Yes, for the to, this is this.
Is it the 514 or 92 for total amount?
For the total amount of $514,092.
So move.
Seconded by who? Chelsea. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, and it's unanimous.
And then lastly, so the grants, the ESR grants. Y'all noticed that I have removed the ESR two grant reporting from this packet since we did report at last month's meeting that we had fully expended that grant in advance of the 9/30/2023 end date. In terms of ESR three, we had one small purchase, and that was for $1,300 for some additional envisioned math licenses. And at this point in time, we do have $30,245 remaining on ESR three. And as a reminder, we have until September 30th of 2024 to expend those funds. In terms of the revolving accounts, the facility rental account has really been kind of quiet, we'll say, over the past few months. As you can see, we did start the fiscal year with $274,000 in that account. We have not received any revenue yet. However, we have sent out invoices for some of our rentals that we do operate here at Trotter and also at Woodward through the O'Measipet Valley Collaborative. So I will expect to see some of those revenues coming in shortly. And we have also only expended about $2,700 to date. However, we have received invoices for the Trotter paving, and so we will be processing those very shortly as well.
Can I make a comment around the Trotter paving? So the original communication that we received from the town was that the cost was going to be $182,000. So we did not see the bid, we did not see really any information other than here's the cost. When we got the bid, the actual bill, it was $242,000. So we did not sign any change orders, we did not, um, sign any, you know. So, so our concern is this, is that, um, you know, we don't have two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars for the paving. The school committee approved a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars to, to do the work. And we're working with the town on trying to identify why, what's the sixty thousand dollar difference?
Do you have the bid package?
We do have the bid package, however, we've received some of the invoicing and the backup, and we've been working with the town and also Brian Fantoni is reviewing it.
I think, um, with a new, uh, D P W superintendent, I think, um, you know, we've, we've shared some of our concerns around when we, when you go out to bid and where we need oversight of what that is, and change orders and, um, the process, and he, he's in full agreement.
It really wasn't a heads up on this?
The other thing worth noting is that the Trotter project was an ad alternate of, of the bid and was not part of the core bid. Um, it was added as an alternate, and so the, it, that, and Greg described it well, the detail of that was, was fragmented, but we were not part of that.
Which is pretty easy to see the number that was presented.
Correct. So that, that was the ad alt bid amount that came in for the Trotter addition. It was a hundred and eighty-two thousand.
Yeah, this wasn't a ten percent over, this was a thirty, thirty, thirty-three percent over. So I have a question on the revolving account, um, the facility rental. Is this presented, you said you had some invoices out, so is this a cash presentation or a accrual, it's a cash presentation? So, so you've got invoices out, but until they're paid, they're not gonna show up on this report? Okay. Thank you.
And then the last, um, piece of that is the extended day program. So now that we have started this school year, we are starting to see some of those tuition payments coming through. So in September, we did collect just over, um, one hundred and forty thousand dollars in tuition. Um, and our expenses, um, year-to-date are one hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Um, we did start off with a healthy balance of two hundred and forty-six thousand, so that is kind of setting, um, the difference between those two figures. But I do expect to see those numbers coming up because we, last year, based on the trends, each month, we were seeing an increase in the tuitions that were slowly chipping away at that, um, that, that deficit.
The expense includes the, the summer?
Yes.
And I'll just make one note that fees were not raised for families, um, so they have remained constant, the tuitions.
I think that was part of my question, um, so what's the logic of setting the tuition and, and also the, uh, the expense? Are we always losing money in this?
We are profiting. So the, the tuitions that we charged were really what, um, the S C D P, the, the nonprofit organization charged before we took, took it over. And then we made a commitment to not raise the tuition costs until we got a better understanding of what our finance, financial situation was. And it's been, um, very healthy.
Yeah, we, I mean, we started or ended the fiscal year and started the fiscal year with two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, um, you know, when we had finished everything. Uh, so I really do think that we were able to cover expenses, and I feel like we had enough of a healthy balance to kind of, we, our goal was to have three months of expenses and savings, and we were, um, where we wanted to be at fiscal year end.
So moving on to the, um, F Y twenty-five budget priorities.
So we met on, um, Wednesday, October fourth. First date I have right this evening. To review the budget priorities, and, um, in your packet is the redlined, um, work. And I think, um, I'll just kind of summarize that, um, a difference between last year's budget priorities and this year's is it's much more specific items that are listed. Um, and again, um, the question was asked, does this align with some of the principal's requests? And it, it, it does.
Any comments or questions? Yes.
So the one thing that, um, we talked a little bit about at that last meeting, open meeting, was prioritizing, if you will. And is this, does, so, I don't know that we got through that, did we?
I, I did not do my homework assignment.
Well, uh, was it left to, was it actually, was it, did we throw it, uh, throw it at, at you all to, to actually tell us what your priorities were? Is that how we left it?
I was going to send out a Google form with the priorities.
I didn't want to throw you under the bus, because I was thinking maybe.
I did that to myself, so.
Maybe we should have done some, okay, so, so that would, that's probably the one other thing that you would want. And so would we, right?
Yeah. I think, I think it makes sense to have, you take the first shot, and then we can review and see, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, as we discussed in the meeting, in the special meeting, that as long as I have, uh, we have a sense of kind of a direction. Um, and then if the, the school committee prioritizes by November, it's still in a, a timeframe that is, that is helpful for us.
I think it was just the, can't necessarily do everything, right? So you need, you need, um, I think, to know where, where your priorities would be. I presume also it would be aligned with the school committees.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Uh, so we're not.
I do, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
I do, I do think that, that the red lines, um, pretty accurately described, very accurately described where we ended up, right? So I think that was, I think it was good.
Uh, so should we hold off on the vote then?
I'll do my homework this time.
You got the date right, though.
I know.
Uh, so next item on the agenda is the F Y twenty-five budget calendar.
So, um, no new additions to the dates, um, other than a key milestone date for the finance department is all, um, principal and director budgets are due to the finance department on October twenty-third. So that's when aggregation of, of budgets begin.
Um, can I just make one comment? So I was looking at this earlier, and I didn't realize that town meeting was set for March thirtieth, which is Easter weekend. So I have a concern as a school committee member that we get low participation from people who are in the school system in general, just due to. But that also, we get Good Friday off still, so it's a long weekend, so I just, I, I have a lot of concerns about it being that weekend.
So let me confirm that it's actually that weekend and talk with, um, Mark Purple about, because I'm sure, I'm sure you're not the only committee with that concern.
And then the operational budget subcommittee, um, Kamali and I are on that one. And are we supposed to meet between now and the twenty-third?
No.
Oh, okay.
So Sher, I will work with Cheryl on scheduling a date.
Okay, so I don't have to do anything for that? You're gonna tell me whatever, okay.
Other questions? Okay, so next item on the agenda is educational policy. There's none at this time, correct?
Correct.
Uh, and then the policy development and our distribution, also none at this time. So the next item up is personnel items, distribution of personnel report.
So in your packet, um, the personnel report as of October eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Um, so we've, we are slowly making appointments again. I think we've talked about the educator support professionals, all of the positions that were still, um, struggling to fill, not only in South Grove, but also in North Grove and the region. Um, but the H R department is, is recruiting and, um, thinking of creative ways to make sure that, um, open positions are filled. And no resignations.
Uh, so next up in the packet is communications. M I S C Mass, um, Joint Conference Information.
So it's not too late to register.
And Story Bridge.
So the Coalition for Equity is, um, hosting, um, its second Story Bridge event. Last year was the inaugural event, um, so on October nineteenth at six o'clock, uh, at Algonquin. Um, we will be having our stories on the stage, Story Bridge event. We have ten community members across North Grove and South Grove who will be sharing their stories, um, with the community. It's a excellent event. If you haven't listened to Moth Radio Hour, it's similar to that. I highly encourage people to attend. It's, um, it's a free evening of excellent, um, stories and learning about our community.
I wanted to, can I add to that, that, um, so this year, I, I went to it last year, it was wonderful. I really, again, just reiterate that it's wonderful to go to. There were high school students who presented last year, too, so it's kind of nice to see, um, that, too, and community members, too. Um, but also I wanted to mention that Lisa De Souza is actually telling a story about him. Um, so any school committee members who would like to go, it would be a great thing to hear. Any other comments, questions? Okay, so next up is action on the minutes. So this is a vote to, I will take any comments or questions about the minutes. There's just one. If there's no comments or questions, I'll take a motion to approve the South Grove School Committee Open Meeting Minutes, uh, for Wednesday, September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
So move.
And all in favor? And that passes unanimously. Next up is the approval of bills, we don't, and payroll, we don't discuss that, do we, usually? Uh, okay, agenda items for next month.
So on the presentation cycle, we have the multilingual learner education and multilingual learner data report. Um, so that will be wrote on the web. And we also have, um, the principal report will be from Catherine Belanday.
Um, I'm not sure if this is the right place to bring this up, but I just, I had a question about, do we ever do anything where we acknowledge the teachers who've received, you know, these smaller grants, like the three-D printer, these other places? Because if not, I would like to suggest that maybe we have one school committee meeting, maybe at the end of the year, to acknowledge and recognize those teachers.
I think that'd be great, I think.
Any other agenda items?
Well, you're gonna have budget priorities, a vote, I think.
Our meeting's before the conference, right? So we can't ask for an update.
We do, it's a Monday, it's a Monday meeting, right?
Oh, is it that, is that?
Yeah, because the day changed, so it's, it's Monday.
So any other, I guess, agenda items can be emailed to Kamali?
Right.
Uh, okay, and moving on then finally to public comments. Is there any additional public comment? Seeing none, I will, um, take a motion to adjourn.
Could I just add something?
Yes.
Just to remind everybody that there is the drive-through flu clinic for North Grove and South Grove residents at Algonquin this weekend. The signup link was in Greg's notice that he sent home this week.
Anything else? Okay, so now I will take a motion to adjourn South Grove School Committee meeting of October eleventh.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Hey, I heard you second first. Yeah, all in favor? So it's unanimous, we are adjourned at eight thirty-six.